I'd like to have you stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record, we tonight, we're going to be conducting our council meeting via teleconferencing. And with that said, we'll start with roll call. Julie.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Council Gerson.
Present.
Council Nash.
Here.
Council Trask.
Here.
Council Goble.
Here.
Council Gorley.
Here.
Council Coleman.
Here.
Let the record show, we have all seven councillors present with no absence. Consent agenda, request for council action appointment to Park and Tree Committee.
We have a couple of things on your consent agenda, Mr. Mayor. You have an appointment to Park and Tree Committee, appointment to the Planning Commission, from both March 10th and March 19th.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Because we're teleconferencing, we have a motion to second on the table. We will do everything this evening by roll call. So, I'll say the councillors. Roll call.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Council Gerson.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council Trask.
Yes.
Council Goble.
Yes.
Council Gorley.
Yes.
And Council Coleman.
Yes.
Let the record show, we have seven ayes with no nays. Approval, appointment of the Park and Tree Committee. Do we have aliens coming or what?
That's a submarine going down.
Oh.
That's what those are.
Next, request for council action appointment to the Planning Commission.
That was all part of the consent agenda.
Was that still all part of that? Okay.
Good, I like it.
Moving on.
Recognition of visitors and hearing.
Okay, recognition of visitors, hearing petitions because it's pretty much closed to the public. There will be not. Old business is nothing. Let's see what's on the back here. Sorry, there is some old business. Request for council action temporary policy response to COVID-19.
At our special meeting on, I think it was the 19th, we brought a very bare bones policy, just so we had something on the books. Since then, a lot has changed related to COVID-19 pandemic. The federal government has handed down some family first FECRA, F-F, Family First Corona.
Virus Response Act.
Response Act, thank you. For one, the state has also made some clarifications. If you turn to page 23 of your packet, you'll see the RCA. Some things that I want to make sure you understand is this policy is designed first and foremost to try and help stop the spread of COVID-19. Everything else comes after that. This policy is slightly different than the Family First Corona Response Act. You can, if you turn to page 30 of your packet, you'll see a a graph. Julie, Julie was the artist involved here, so we give Julie credit where credit is due. What we tried to do was go down and list the scenarios down the left-hand side. And then how an employee would be able to utilize leave going from left to right across the top. The Family First, the federal act inquires that employees give employers 80% 80 hours or two weeks, if you're a full-time employee, prorated for part-time employees, at 80%, or excuse me, 60% of their leave, 66%, two-thirds. What we're proposing is to make that two-week leave bank at 100% of their regular rate. After that, then they would begin using their various types of accruals depending upon the qualifying scenario that they would fall into. So again, the difference between what we're proposing and the federal act is instead of this two-thirds of their regular rate, we're proposing to give them that 80-hour bank at 100% of their rate. And then after that, depending on the scenario, then they would move across in how they utilize their accruals.
Any questions of councillors?
No, just a statement. I really like the way you laid that out.
Thank you.
It's really easy.
They need a council directive.
So moved as recommended.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, roll call, vote.
Council Gerson.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
How's say your vote?
Yes.
He said yes, but.
He said yes, but no.
No audio. Go like this.
He can say yes now.
Once more, Council Nash, we couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Okay.
Council Trask.
Yes.
Council Goble.
Yes.
Council Gorley.
Yes.
Council Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. Let the record show, we have seven yeses and no nays, approval of temporary policy response to COVID-19. Next, request for council action 2021 water rate review.
We began this discussion back during our council training a couple of months ago. If you recall, we spent a significant amount of time talking about some issues that we've discovered in the, in the water delivery system that we feel are imperative, that we take care of immediately in order to protect the integrity of the system, avoid contamination, boil orders, those kinds of things. On top of that, we wanted to continue with some meter replacement projects. Some of our meters are two to three times their lifespan right now. We think that's giving us significant inaccuracies in our, in our reads. We also wanted to do the VRF pumps, which are the variable rates. So instead of hammering the system because it's on or off, it can build up, and that should theoretically prevent some leaks. And I believe it also includes the replacement of the leaky two-inch galvanized lines that reconnect on Ninth Avenue. So these rates build that into it. We took all of, remember we had the graph with all the different buckets and where the water could, the buckets could fill. We took all of your recommendations in, including the sale of the Ninth Avenue property to kind of buy that down. And what we will do is we will show that as a payment back on the loan and then bring that back in, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, so the paper trail will be there, and then they will bring it back into the, to the capital fund for the water system. So we've done all of those things. It's all laid out in the RCA. Most people will see a dollar seventy-one increase per month. It's not a whole lot. And this is a rate that would take effect for collection beginning in July. So it's not an immediate effect. It doesn't go into effect now. It would be for those payments that come starting in July. And I think that's what we've got.
Okay. Any questions of councillors? Need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Seven for 2020.
I'll second it.
Motion second, second by councillor Nash. By roll call, vote please.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council Trask.
Yes.
Council Goble.
No.
Council Gorley.
No.
Council Coleman.
No.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Council Gerson.
Yes.
Let the record show, we have four ayes with three nays. Approval of the water rate increase of adoption Resolution Number Seven for 2020. Moving on to new business, proclamation, child abuse prevention month. Child abuse prevention month proclamation. Whereas children are vital to our organ's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being the most vulnerable assets. Whereas all children deserve to have a safe, stable, nutrient homes and communities that they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both current and future quality of life of a community. Whereas communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress, nurture their children, ensure that all children grow to their full potential. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and business community. Therefore, I, Greg Mahler, Mayor, do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live, proclaim this 14th day of April of 2020. Next, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing at six forty, and it will be continued. And I'm to turn that over to Mr. Springlin, is that correct?
Blair.
Or Blair? Is Blair?
I'll take that.
Okay, Blair.
Yes, this public hearing was supposed to take place tonight. It is to examine the text amendments to our development code for the flood hazard area. This is necessary to maintain flood insurance. It's a, it's adjustments to our code that is required if we are to have properties continuing to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. We expected to bring all of the materials necessary to you tonight for this public hearing. However, at the Planning Commission public hearing, there were some questions about the ordinance that required some additional research before we could have all the materials ready for you. Because we noticed it already, we are required by law to at least open the public hearing tonight. And so we are asking you to continue the public hearing to the next council meeting, which would be April 28th. And we will have all the materials ready and available for you then for public comment.
Okay. That said, we will go and close the public hearing at six forty. We will continue it to April 28th, but, uh, council meeting. Thanks, Blair. Next, for information only, 2020 fee schedule update.
So we've begun to, in order to try and simplify things for the public, what we've started doing over the past year and a half, is taking all of our fees and putting them into one location. So as a member of the public, if you're, one, there's only one place where a fee is listed. So we run into some situations where fees were listed in a couple of different places and they were not harmonious with each other. Second, and just now when you write the code, you just reference the fee and the fee, you know, according to the fee schedule. And we annually will review these. What you have in front of you is a, is our first draft, and I can tell you that there are going to be five or six others that we have found in code that we need to move over here, that we actually just ran into today. Anything in red is changed or new. And at the next meeting, you will have a more complete one with everything in it, but we just, there's a lot to digest. As you go through it, you can see there's pages upon pages, and so we wanted to give you ample opportunity to at least get a start on it. So just, just for your information, you'll have a completed one at the next meeting.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, when we do the SDCs, we're going to have to look at this again, right? Okay, so it's kind of an ongoing, okay.
Our goal is to get it pinned down to where we're looking at it once a year. We can bring it to you like every January or every February, but again, we're still going through and finding things in the code and or in fact, we found one today that's, that's been listed in there, and Joe said, I don't think I've ever issued that fee. So we've never charged that fee or given that permit. So now we're trying to track down, okay, where is it in the code? Is it still relevant? Should it have been removed and those kinds of things? So, but we just, again, wanted to give you a chance to bite into it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, so how many have you found that we should not have in there? According to past practice, like the one you just mentioned.
Two, maybe three, at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions of councillors?
So your, the city council packets, agenda, meeting agendas, all that will still be online for free. This is just for paper copies.
This is if you, if you want it mailed.
Okay.
That's what, that would be the charge, which is just the act, as close as we can come to the actual costs, guessing how many pages on average.
Okay.
And then the postage as well.
Any other questions of councillors? Okay, moving on. Request for council action Resolution Number Six for 2020 USDA Rural Development Grant Application Resolution.
Yeah. So we like free money. We go after it whenever we can. Jeff, are you on? Do you want to take this?
Absolutely. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Well, before council is an RCA and a resolution associated with a yes, no? With a proposed USDA rural development grant request. Basically, the proposed grant, you know, if it gets funded, would assist in replacing our aging canine patrol vehicle, as well as providing some ballistic shields and ballistic vest carriers for each of our patrol cars. The grant is designed to fund 35% of the proposed project, and the remaining 65% would be funded through the police department. The total cost of the proposed project, should it be accepted, would be in the neighborhood of $59,000, just over $59,000. And of that, the grant would provide just over $20,000, and the police department would be responsible for the, the other $38,000. Basically, one of our officers, Officer McDonald, who really put the canine program together, she's the one that stepped forward to write, write this grant and see if she can be successful in it. The project would basically, if it's approved, would get us a fully equipped canine patrol vehicle. And, and those were a little different than just a regular patrol vehicle. They come with some extra safety measures for the canines themselves. You know, they have heat sensors and heat alarms in them. Just aim to keep the dogs safe in summer times. But also in, in the project, she's included a request for seven ballistic vest carriers and seven ballistic shields, basically to place in each of the patrol vehicles. And, and what they are all designed is just to add another layer of protection for the first-line officers. It's additional ballistic protection, should they need it in, in different instances. The body armor, the the, the body vest carriers, I'm sorry, adds another layer of body armor for the, the chest area of officers, especially when they're dealing with a, a high-risk situation. And the shields also provide just a different level of protection as tactics change, whether it's the service of a search warrant or when officers are dealing with an actually armed suspect. It just provides a higher level of ballistic protection. Basically, it provides some protection against rifle rounds. And so I would, you know, above all, regardless of the outcome, I appreciate Officer McDonald's efforts in putting this together. And if this were to be approved and funded, we'd be looking at this in the 2021 fiscal year.
Mayor, any questions of councillors?
Mr. Mayor, Jeff, I, I, when it comes time for this thing, she went to a lot of things to throw in front of us. And I'm not sure I would be okay with an F-150 pickup rather than a Durango, let's say. Unless you, you could convince me that it was, it's better to have that. But it seems like the unit that they have now seems to be working pretty well. That might not be true. I can be convinced that it would be better to have a pickup. But I'd like to have what you guys think when it comes time to buy that thing, so we have a little more clarity on, on which would be the best vehicle for what you're going to use it for.
Right, and Officer McDonald reached out to just different platforms to see what the expense would be associated with the platforms. Really, the Dodge Durangos come in at the, the best for the cost benefit. They're the cheapest along those lines. And so we purchased our first Dodge Durango patrol vehicle, and so far it's gotten solid reviews from the officers who are using it. So right now, we'd be looking at moving towards that type of platform.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Need a council directive?
I, I do have a question.
Any one more question?
So, Chief, this talks about loan. Is, this is a grant, not a loan. Is it just the way the application's written?
That's, that's correct. The city attorney also had those questions, as did I when I first read it. To be honest, this is the first USDA grant that I'm aware of that our department's put in for, and so it is a grant, not a loan, but that is some of, it appears some of the standard paperwork that they require for their loan packet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number Six for 2020.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call please.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Trask.
Yeah.
Council Goble.
Yes.
Council Gorley.
Yes.
Council Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Council Gerson.
Yes.
Let the record show, we have seven ayes with no nays, approval of Resolution Number Six for 2020. Discussion only, operational update, COVID-19.
Given everything that's going on, I thought it would be good for you as a council and for the community to just kind of hear some things that have been going on within City Hall and our other locations related to what we're doing to continue providing service throughout the pandemic, different steps that, that we have taken and that staff has taken. So what I'd like to do is just give each department head a minute to, to talk about what they're doing and how they and their staff are, are dealing with all of this and, and also help maybe clarify, we are still providing services, we are still doing the things that we normally would do, albeit we're doing it differently. So I'd like to do, with your permission, is just turn it over to each, each department head for maybe 45 seconds, minute and a half maybe, to, to just quickly talk about what they're doing and how they've changed their operations. So if I could, I'd like to ask Greg, do you want to start with Public Works for us?
Yeah, we absolutely do nothing different, right? Well, what we did is, you know, we have a lot of people in a small space, and what I was more concerned about is when everybody arrives, and we have 17 employees, everybody arrives at a certain time. Everybody takes their lunch at a set, you know, at a set time, breaks, so on and so on. So what we did was based off the amount of people, we did parks and fleet. They, they start now at 6:30 in the morning, take their lunch around 11:00, they end at 3:00, and every 30 minutes after that, we staggered by division. Street starts 30 minutes after that, and lunch 30 minutes after, and so on. Collection starts at 7:30, lunch at noon, they end at 4:00, and distribution water comes in at 8:00, lunch at 12:30, end shift at 4:30. Stephen and Trish were sharing an office. We kind of split them up a little bit. So, you know, it's business as usual. We're taking a little bit more precautions. We split all the employees up into individual vehicles. We're trying not to have at all people sharing cabs while they're working, so we put people in dump trucks. And he, also that three-wheeler, if you've seen it around, we've had James in that part of the.
Yeah, I saw that the other day.
Yeah, so we're, we're doing okay, and for the most part, everybody's being respective of everybody's space.
Thank you, Greg. And if we could maybe also point out today, Public Works, excuse me, led the volunteer group to do some planting work in the meetings. And we did work hard to make sure everybody was abiding by appropriate social distancing. It was supplied masks, everybody had gloves. They were a minimum of six feet apart, for the most part, at all times. There had to be some friendly reminders. Oh, yeah, I forgot. Everybody jump back to it, but yeah, so we're, we're working, we're doing what we can. Jeff, do you want to talk about Police Department?
Absolutely. Our department is, we're still here thankfully, and we remain out in the community and available 24/7, as we've always been. A couple of things I wanted to point out was that our lobby remains open, and that's one of our goals, is to try to do all we can to, to keep our lobby open for anyone that needs assistance or needs our services. But with that, we've also taken some, some somewhat aggressive social distancing measures to try to keep our, our staff healthy and the community safe as well. Some of those measures include, we, we've limited our building, access to our building aside from the lobby, to all but essential personnel. We were restricting access to our dispatch center to try to keep them healthy and limiting our officer-to-officer contacts as much as possible. So we're looking at things as we go, as this progresses. You know, we all know that recommendations change frequently, if you've been paying attention. What we have noticed, and we've experienced an increase in thefts, theft-related calls for service. And in order to try to tackle some of that, we've moved our school resource officer and one of our detectives back to patrol shifts to help combat some of that. The detective has actually moved and remains on night shift just to increase our presence at night and our patrol capabilities then. And we're just looking at different ways to, as this progresses, continually reassessing how we respond and make adjustments where we, we think we can make them and be successful at them.
Great. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Hey, Chief, one thing, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback about delivery of prescriptions to the elderly.
Yes, that has actually, we've gotten some great feedback on that. And actually, we've gotten a lot more use out of it, or people have requested that service much more than I thought they would, actually. So we probably deliver anywhere from two to four a week and to, to the, some of the vulnerable populations that can, can use it. So I think it's been a great addition.
I'd like to commend you and your officers for that initiative. I think that's great.
No, thank you. I'll pass that on.
Rose, do you want to fill us in on the library?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So when items are returned, we take them out of the book drop and we disinfect them and quarantine them for three days before we let them become available for another patron to check out, or we re-shelve them. The library is also offering contactless curbside delivery. So when patrons put items on hold, they notify us. We put the items out on a cart that's in the alley between the library and the post office. They drive up, pick it up off of the cart, and drive off with them. Some good news in all of this is that we received a grant from the trust manager. Some good news in all of this is that we received a grant from the trust management, trust management services in the amount of $9,743. We'll be looking at replacing the furniture in the teen room and in the children's room. That furniture hasn't been replaced since the building was built in 1969. So I think it's about time that we do that. We're going to brighten it up and make the furniture easier to move. The existing furniture, I think, will go on for sale and probably last another 50 years. That's what we're doing at the library. Do you have any questions?
So, I believe last year you offered an increase in library availability to students outside of the city. Are you going to be able to do that this summer? I think there's going to be an increased need.
Yes, we are developing, as I told the department heads this morning, we have Plan A, which is maybe the governor releases and we can do some summer reading programs outside. Plan B is maybe, that's not going to happen. Maybe we will do something else and still do social distancing. Maybe she'll let us be in groups, but social distancing. Plan C is we will mail everything to the kiddos. We've decided not to do online. After looking at our statistics from the FCC, only 30% of our community has internet capability and internet at home. So I've opted to look at grants and see if we can mail out packets to everybody. So that'll be our plan. That'll be Plan C if A and B don't go. Trying to think ahead, Lisa. Counselor Worley?
Thank you.
Very good, Rose. Any other questions?
I, I just want to clarify one thing. She used the term curbside delivery. I want to make sure people realize we're not delivering books to your curb. Curbside might be a better description. So, yeah, staff's been, they've been working really hard and, yeah, so you can call, set up an appointment, pick up your books right there in the little alley way behind there. And then staff takes the old ones in and cleans them and quarantines them for 72 hours and then makes them available again to reshuffle. So Blair?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. So KED is still operating. Planning operations are, we're still taking applications and our planner is actually working from home and is able to do most of the work necessary from there. All of the, the work can pretty much be done electronically. And, and that's being pretty well received. Everyone who we need to contact is being fairly understanding about those things. When hard copies are necessary to take, we have it arranged where there's a, a table set up out the side door and people can drop off their materials there and, and we can then take them in. And likewise, if, if we need to get hard copies out, we can set them out there for people to pick up. We're doing that for building permits as well and for building plans. Our, our permit technician is still, has plenty of work. It's actually surprising how much building activity is, is still going on. There was not really much decrease in March. At the end of this month, it'll be interesting to see what the change in building permits is for this month, but so far, it's, it's not as decreased as I would have expected. There's still a lot of activity and our conversations with builders also suggest that we will likely see a rise in activity when everything starts to reopen, that there's a number of projects that are kind of waiting in the wings for things to loosen up. So that's a very good sign. We're happy to hear about that. At City Hall, just like in finance, we are closed to the public. And so we don't have anybody coming in to the counter for anything. And we've adjusted and made things available by phone and by email, and that's gone well. What's interesting is that the decreased public interaction in person, I think in some ways, has led to an ability to focus more on individual tasks. Our, our staff aren't interrupted as much as they are normally. And so that's, you know, a positive thing during this time. We, we have had a drop in code enforcement activity because our code enforcement officer is also the city's emergency manager. And the, this emergency has taken most of his time. There has been some code enforcement activity he's still been able to do, but a lot of his work has been self-generated. But also even with the calls that we've, that we've received, there has been kind of a drop in calls, mostly, I think, because people aren't out and about to notice things and complain. But also, it, it's interesting, there, there's not as many yards with tall weeds or grass right now because a lot of people are home and taking care of those things. So that's, you know, some, some cheerful news amongst the gloom. We, staff has also begun an account with recovers.org, which is an online portal that can connect people with needs to, with volunteers who can fill those needs. So we've, we've kind of tried to begin that process to see if we can find what gaps exist in our, in our community and what we can do to, to help meet those gaps. What we're seeing so far is that we do have a number of people who will volunteer, but most of the needs seem to be financial and not necessarily the, the kind of needs that a lot of volunteers in the, in the community can fill. But we are working to connect those dots as, as, as well as we can. I think, oh, as for economic development activity, obviously, that has taken a big hit right now. And there's not really much, much going on beyond trying to make sure that all the businesses in town have access to the resources that they need to survive during this time and to recover when we open things up. And so most of, a lot of my time has been spent keeping track of the federal and state programs that are out there and making those available to, to our businesses, trying to get the word out on that. And there's also a number of, of things that the state has done. There's so many online resources right now to educate business owners and to provide as much technical support as we, as we can. It's, it's really astounding to see how many, I mean, if you're a business owner, you can, you can fill up all of your time online, getting really useful training and, and good information right now. And so we're trying to make sure that everybody is aware of that. And that's, that's certainly a, a big job to, to communicate all of that. And that's about, that's about it for KED. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Hey, Blair, if, we've been getting the word out to the businesses regarding, I know what you're saying there, but about the SBA payroll protection.
Payroll protection program and the idle loans.
And then some of the grants that are out there.
We, yes, we are doing our best to get the word out for, what I'm seeing is there's a number of businesses that are very responsive and very interested in, in hearing and getting emails from me. And then there's a, there's quite a few people that I don't hear from. So I, I'm trying to get the word out as best we can. I would appreciate everyone else. Tell, tell everybody, you know, to, to get in touch with the city. We have, we have access to a lot of that information and we want them to know about it. And for most, I, I know that there's a, there's a, a digital divide sometimes where there's, there's some folks who are running a business and are not as comfortable with, with technology and the options there. We want to help with that and we, we want to try to bridge that gap as best we can. So I, if, if you're running a business, there's, there's lots of resources available for you if you take the time to reach out and connect with those. And, and we want to help you make those connections.
Yeah, it's, it's very imperative that they get on to that sooner than later because I was talking to several financial institutes and the funds are running out. So they need to get their applications in, SBA applications in sooner than later. They want to have a chance at it.
Definitely.
I just want to report that as part of my job, I was to call some of the businesses in the area to make sure that they were aware of it. And the businesses I was in touch with said that they were able to speak with, or Blair had contacted them. So I'm going to say I was doing a great job because they, he was in touch with them as well.
Thanks, Blair.
Mr. Mayor, there, I saw a, a guy out in the property over there today surveying. Is there something happening there?
The, the owners of that property are wanting to move forward with a multifamily housing development. On that, my understanding is that the frontage on Main Street, they have intend for some kind of commercial activity, but behind that, there would be residential. And they haven't submitted any permits yet, but they've had some informal conversations with staff and they're putting their plans together of exactly what they're going to put in. My understanding is that it would be a number of apartments, probably two-bedroom apartments.
To add to that, yes, he's, he's moving forward with it. Yeah. He, the, the only hiccup was he was working with the engineering, you know, engineering hiccup with it. But other than that, he plans on moving forward. He still would like to have, like you mentioned, commercial possibilities out front. So, very good. Thanks, Blair.
Sure. I'll turn it over to Brandon now.
The Finance Office is still operating though behind closed doors. So we are still answering the phones, taking utility payments over phone, online via our website. Or folks are, are welcome to mail or drop checks in our Dropbox right out, right outside our doors, across the, across from the front doors. We did go through recently, last, this last Wednesday would have been shut off day if this were a normal time. We would have had 116 accounts that would have been turned off for non-payment. That's a lot for us. And so we are starting to, I think, see some of the effects of kind of what's happened and, and folks who maybe unfortunately have lost their, their normal income or are still trying to get through unemployment, because I hear that system is, is like pulling teeth to get through. So I am, I'm glad that, that we have put in place a, a policy and that we're not doing shut offs right now. Of those 116 in accounts, 116 accounts, we have tried to contact every one of them via phone or email. If we didn't have a valid phone number, we've left voicemails. For those properties, the, the tenants or the owners of the property, we've seen about a 50% pay rate on the, the past dues. And some of it was just as, as simple as they didn't know that they could still make that payment through us, whether or not to do so. On the renter, renters' side, we are seeing more like 30 or 40% of those numbers of the original folks on the shut off list that, that are paying, the rest of them are not. We have worked, tried to work with each customer that calls in if they, if they need some kind of help or assistance during this time, trying to set up kind of payment plans, whatever they're able to do, we're, we're trying to work with them. We are saying that if they're able to, to set something up with us and make some progress on the bill, then we will waive the late fees and interest for the policy that you reviewed in March. And so that's, that's working really well for, for folks and, and it's giving them some kind of grace period, so to speak. We are telling, we are reminding folks though, however, that that unfortunately, unfortunately, the balance will stick with the account. And so at some point, that balance will come due and we're just trying to, trying to ask them to, to make some kind of progress to, to help them from having a catastrophically large bill down the road. Because at some point, our normal operations will resume and, and shut offs will resume as well, I imagine. So we've worked very diligently. Lacy in my office and Cindy have both, and Angie, all three of them have worked very hard to reach out to folks and, and communicate with folks. So I, I do want to give them kind of a shout out for, for their efforts and I appreciate the work that they've done. As far as revenues, we are seeing some kind of downtrend because of that non-payment. On some accounts, we're seeing some decrease in what we anticipate at this point in the year in revenues. Through the first 10 days in March, I can say we were about five and a half percent down in our revenue generation from the same time last year. So we are hoping that that does not continue because obviously then that means we're going to need to look at some cutbacks. Ray, I think, mentioned previously that the city has implemented kind of a non-essential spending freeze so that, that we can kind of, I guess, ease into what our new normal might look like. We have received some guidance from the state of Oregon related to things like our state gas tax revenues. They are telling us to expect $35,000 less for this fiscal year, which, if you think about it, only has a few months left because June is the end of our fiscal year. Next year, they're telling us to think, to expect $45,000 less than we initially had budgeted. So the impacts of the, of COVID-19 are, are here. It's going to require Sweet Home to respond imbly, to really evaluate what we can do with the finances we have going forward while making sure that we can still make some progress. So Ray and I and, and the department heads have, have started discussing some of that. We anticipate that property taxes at some point will likely dive down some. But if, if you think about it, property taxes don't normally take that hit for a year or two because it follows the real estate market and is usually a year behind. So there's some, some solace there in, in that I think we're all right for another year on the property tax side. But everything's up in the air at this point and we're trying to monitor in my office as closely as possible what our revenues look like and making sure that, that we have the cash we need to continue our operations.
So I have a question. Is, we said we wouldn't turn off the water for non-payment, but we might need to revisit that because they might need to fill out a questionnaire and see if they've lost employment, whatever that is causing this. And so, because they need to have some kind of a plan for payment, because come along next month, if everybody's employed and things haven't changed for that household, maybe they're going to have to be cut off where someone else, they're both retail workers and they've lost their jobs for whatever reason, and they need to be able to have leeway. That would be my first thought was there's going to have to be some kind of assessment so we can continue this. Because we don't want to go five and six months and people say, oh, I don't have to pay my bill, but I can leave, right? And then the other thing is, is the federal funds that they're looking at coming to cities is, have you looked to see if that's going to help us offset some of this? Or do they even have that language lined out yet?
They don't quite have the, it's still being worked on from what I understand. As I know, I got an email today, I didn't get a chance to read it though, from the League of the National Native Cities, I believe, regarding the latest House resolutions. So I know it's being discussed and talked about. Initially, the first relief effort was only for communities of 500,000 or more in population, which I don't know why. But this next relief effort, cities, small city made it very apparent to the League that it was affecting small cities as well. So they've been working hard and diligently on that. I have had an email conversation back and forth with our elected zone, please supporting it and keeping their eyes and watching for that and that we need the help as well. So we will apply for whatever we can possibly fit under and, and hope for the best.
Related to, to some of the utility bills and, and folks kind of leaving that on maybe property owners' doorsteps, we've taken steps in our office to, we, we're keeping kind of a, an internal list of, of those properties so that we can keep track of those bills, still trying to reach out on a regular basis to, to try to get some money. So that if those bills don't become overwhelming for the residents, because they will. For some people, the bills are only 60 some odd dollars a month and for others, they can be. only 60 some odd dollars a month, and for others, they can be 150, $200 a month, depending on consumption. And folks are starting to see more consumption because they're spending more time at home. And so those, unfortunately, those monthly bills are only going to get worse. What I can say is that we internally will work to ensure that bills related to the coronavirus timeframe are not stuck with the property owners. Typically, through by city policy, we don't send out our utility bills to a collection agency. And bills accumulated during this timeframe, we will, once this is all said and done and over, if they have tried, if they've left the property and haven't paid that that utility bill. So we're trying to help protect the property owners as well during this timeframe. Because we don't want anybody getting stuck with something that isn't rightfully theirs, because we have a policy in place to try to help people. So.
If I could clarify too, part of that is, we've said, people need to contact us.
Okay.
They need to reach out to us and explain their situation to us, talk to our staff, and then our staff will make arrangements with them. Anybody who's, and in those cases, we will waive late fees, we will waive interest, we will do whatever we can to help people make payment arrangements, set up whatever is convenient for the person who needs the help for that account. People who do not contact us, who do not reach out and explain circumstances, do not try and make payment arrangements with us, they will continue to accrue interest and late fees. That's really the only way we can, we can try and do that and do it fairly with everybody. It is, it is important that if people are experiencing hardships and their water bill is the thing that they, they need help with, then they need to contact us so that we can give them that help. Absolutely.
The last thing I want to add is that part of the policy also passed on the, at the March 19th council meeting, was related to vacation, turn on and turn offs for businesses that are impacted by coronavirus. We have nine businesses in Sweet Home that have taken advantage of that, where they will, they as the business owner will not be responsible for the turn on and turn off fees of putting their, their business in vacation status. And we certainly would love to see more, we'd love to help business owners across the city. So if there's anybody out there listening to this, or if you have folks that are wondering, you know, my business is closed, how can I, you know, try to cut down on some of these expenses? Let them know, have them contact us, have them contact Blair. We've got options. We want to help people during this time. We just hope that people will will reach out and keep in touch with us as well.
So administratively, here in City Hall, obviously, we've closed our doors to the public. We still use the Dropbox. City staff is cleaning. So Julie and I and Joe and Brandon and everybody else is scrubbing the toilet once a week and mopping the floors and vacuuming, doing those things. We do have some staff internally that are working from home. We're fortunate to be in this building, because we now have space. In the old building, we would have been on top of each other and we would have, Joe might have had to work out of a closet or something like that, I don't know, which I think has actually happened before. So we're very fortunate to be here in this space and to be able to spread out and practice social distancing and still complete our work. One thing that Chief Flynn mentioned is, it's been a moving target. And that's made things hard for everybody. And I have to point out that our staff has been amazing. Everybody has jumped in with both feet, done whatever they can to help. They've been dedicated, public servants throughout this entire thing. And I mean, from the library to Public Works to the Police Department to here in this building, everybody has been phenomenal to continue providing service to this community. And I particularly need to point out Tommy and Legia again. Tommy's been on top of things. And Legia is putting in a lot of extra hours that she didn't necessarily sign up for when she accepted her part-time job several months ago. So I really need to make sure that I thank, thank everybody for all of their hard work.
I'd like to add to that. I'd like to say, you know, with this COVID-19 situation where facing, at times, trying to operate the business, city business is, can be very difficult and trying at times. And I think that our city staff and then our department heads are doing an awesome job. And I would like to personally, on behalf of the City Council, thank you, thank you for all your efforts and keep up the good work. Moving on to ordinance bills, request for council, for the second reading of ordinance bills, request for council action ordinance number five for 2020, Sweet Home ordinance pertaining to special events by title only.
Ordinance Bill number five for 2020, Sweet Home ordinance pertaining to special events.
Any questions of council? Need a council directive to move it to third reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, the second, Councilor Goble was the second heard. By roll call, please.
Councilor Trask.
Aye.
Councilor Goble.
Yes.
Councilor Borley.
Yes.
Councilor Coleman.
Aye.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Councilor Gerson.
Yes.
Councilor Nash.
Yes.
And with seven ayes with no nays, to move forward to third and final reading on April 28. Third reading ordinance bills, request for council action ordinance number three for 2020, ordinance amending the official zoning map by title only.
So moved. Oh, he needs to read it.
Ordinance Bill number three for 2020, ordinance number 1283, and ordinance amending the official zoning map.
Mr. Mayor, this is the property that we're trying to do off of, what is that, XYZ Street? Is that what this one is? And the one down off of 40?
Shaking his head no.
No. Okay. Just wanted to know.
No, these are two zone change applications that were made, private parties.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, it's the one on Yucca Street and Tamrac.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I said XYZ Street because I can never remember which ones they are. And then the other one's on 53rd, right?
Correct.
53rd.
Right. Yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page. We're good.
Council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion to approve the application. Move it on to the third reading.
This is third reading, this is.
I'm really confused.
Have a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, the second. By roll call.
Council Goble.
Yes.
Council Borley.
Yes.
Council Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Council Gerson.
Yes.
Council Nash.
No.
Council Trask.
Yes.
At the record show, I have six ayes with one nay, approval of ordinance number three for 2020. Request for council action ordinance number four for 2020.
Ordinance number four for 2020, and ordinance amending the official zoning map.
Does it have an ordinance number?
It does not.
Oh, it should.
It should.
Should be ordinance number four, isn't it?
Four is on page 144.
Eighty-three, that should be 1284.
So ordinance Bill number four for 2020, ordinance number 1284, and ordinance amending the official zoning map.
Any questions? Directive of council.
So I move to approve the application.
A second down.
Motion, the second. Roll call, please.
Council Borley.
Yes.
Council Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Council Gerson.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yeah.
And Council Trask.
Yes.
Council Goble.
Yes.
At the record show, I have seven ayes with no nays, approval of ordinance number four for 2020. Reports to committees, any councilor having to report from committees?
Mr. Mayor, we, if you've been by the Sankey Park lately, they've got that place torn up to getting ready for the playground equipment and the trails and stuff. They're doing a pretty good job down there. Don't tell Greg that.
The Chamber of Commerce is going to meet with Zoom on Thursday night, hopefully. We'll see. I'm not sure how that'll go with me, but we're going to try that.
Actually, Zoom works pretty good. Actually, I've had my fill of it for the last month.
And the other thing is that Showcase was awarded a Lynn County Cultural Coalition grant of $500 to put on Sean's one act plays this summer, if and when we can stop social distancing.
Well, and on that note, we have annual events that we have in the summertime, like the health fair. We probably need to come up with a strategic plan, what that's going to look like. Because even when strict social distancing is released a little bit, we're still going to have some responsibility to change things up a bit. And what's that going to look like? Are we going to have an idea going into the summer so people can plan around that?
Mr. Mayor, Lisa, when is that? Is what, what, is it, what month is that in?
That is like the week after the jamboree, if I remember right, or the week.
That'd be middle of August or so.
Probably a week after, I think, of jamboree. And then we also have a safety fair that the police department puts on. And even going into the fall, we have the autumn activity. So what are we going to do to make those things accommodate the community? What could that, what could that look like?
Well, it could mean that we won't have them.
It could mean we could move outside in the field and have them.
Yeah, that's true.
People stand way back, you know, but, you know, are we going to be doing more, you know, stories? I had to laugh, my grandchildren, they can call this number and have Minnie Mouse or Mickey Mouse tell them a story. Nice, you know, the library could do something like that and maybe be automatic. So you've done it once, but it goes to, you know, the message for any child that calls, you know, something to keep interest in the community.
Which brings to mind the jamboree.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have you, I'm sure you've talked to Robert.
So normally, this is the meeting, or this meeting or last meeting, this meeting is the meeting where you would appear and present his plan and we would have party discussions. I have not talked with Robert directly, but through the grapevine, I understand that they're certainly having some internal discussions as well. There will be a discussion to see how we're going to make it.
I know that the ballet has been canceled and the orchestra and large venues are being canceled.
We canceled the Sweet Home Sweet Ride. We canceled that car show for this year already too.
Yeah. One staff member, one person can infect so many and we could become a hot pocket.
Yeah, that's right.
From our press release, we've had one confirmed case of COVID already.
Correct, we have one confirmed. There have been rumors of others. And we have actively worked to dispel those rumors through our various contacts at different levels. This one, though, we saw the paperwork. So it is definitely a confirmed case. So there are a lot of, I think I have it, I think I was exposed, we've heard several of those, but this was the one that we know is confirmed and there was an absolute positive diagnosis.
So along that line, I had a constituent call me about the possibility of maybe putting something on our sign about wearing masks when you shop. That people are not doing that. I mean, I recognize you don't have to do it, but when you're shopping, I think that that's an appropriate thing that should be done.
It certainly is recommended that people wear masks in public. I believe that's a CDC recommendation at this point. I don't believe that it's a mandate at any level at this point, though. But I do think it's a situation where it would be much the wiser if we all did.
Could be a suggestion from us.
Well, and to do a shout on that, it's Regina that's got the Lynn County mask makers going. And people all over our community are volunteering to make masks and donating materials. And they have just been doing an amazing job for businesses even. And so.
I will, Mr. Mayor, I will say this, every time I've been to a store, and I haven't been wearing a mask, people are absolutely paying attention to where they're at. And they're staying their distance. And that, for me, that's been pretty, pretty amazing to a certain degree. But, you know, our community comes together, just like a lot of other communities, and, and just like this whole group is doing a good job. And, and I think we're pretty responsive to the things that we're asked to do, at least from what I've seen. I went to Winco a couple of weeks ago, and they have, from seven to eight, they have for old people. And we were in a line, and we were all standing there talking, and they were all taking their space. And when I went inside, it wasn't any busier than in any other, any other time that I was, had been there. And people are really doing it. They're, when their cars go by, they, they get away from you and stuff. And so it's, for me, I think it's, it's working. But it doesn't mean it's 100%, you know, because you could get it somehow. So.
I know from, from a business owner standpoint, I, we are, our, our staff is wearing masks and we're on gloves. And we are cleaning on, on the half hour throughout, in our business, every half hour. We've got boxes squared off where people stay six feet apart. For the most part, people are, like Council Trask said, are respectful of that. I've had a few that are very frustrated and upset that social distancing and refuse to abide. And we've had, say, you will abide or else.
Yeah.
And, you know, we do our best. But there's a few folks that are absolutely refusing to wear masks. And I think a lot of it, too, is because they have no resource to get masks. And it'd be great if they had, they know where the resources to get them. I personally, out of six distribution centers, cannot even get one. So it's, it's very troubling that you can't, there are a lot of hoarders out there that grab them all up and nobody else has had the opportunity to get them. It's very difficult to get them. But I appreciate all the volunteers and people that are making them. I think it's great. And I think it's very important we do wear our masks. I think that consumers should wear them. But forcing them, that's going to be another, another challenge. Really is.
Hey, Blair, no texting during our meeting.
He's looking at the agenda.
There you go. Anything else from reports?
Oh, I love it.
Okay. As far as mayor's reporting, I don't have much to report, other than just, I, hopefully, everybody's staying safe and, and everybody and their family is staying safe and, and keep healthy. That's important. So, city manager report.
I think we've all noticed, we got our new sign out front of City Hall. And if I don't say so myself, I think it's pretty amazing. I think it encompasses everything that everybody was looking for in the sign. And it's a great representation of our community and super pleased with it. Legia changed messages out, actually, this late afternoon, evening to some newer things. So super happy with it so far. On Thursday, April 9, the city of Sweet Home and Police Department donated a former incident command vehicle to the Family Assistance and Resource Center Group, or FAC, for their Lynn County Street Outreach Response Team, otherwise known as SORT, to use as a mobile unit. It's a collaborative group of volunteers from our community and others, different organizations working together. different organizations working together to provide outreach services to people experiencing homelessness or housing instability. Services are offered in a trauma-informed way using harm reduction and housing-first principles. This mobile unit will allow the team to meet a wider area of needs in less time with Lynn County services, education, and resources. Their mission is to establish trust and inspire hope by providing access to resources, services, and education to those who are experiencing homelessness and housing instability. Their mission is very much in alignment, almost word for word, with some of the things that you've mentioned in your roles as well. So that's, it was a great resource for us to be able to help. We did a couple little things to the ambulance to make it a little more usable, batteries, some brakes, little things like that. But we're super excited for them, they do great work. Chief Lynn has been working with them for the past three, four months pretty closely, maybe a little longer than that, several months, very closely, so. Very, very appreciative of their work and what they do. Given the COVID-19 and the fact that I have two students, I will be homeschooling my students latter half of this week. So I will be working from home, at least in the mornings, if I can roll their teenage butts out of bed before 8:00 AM.
Luck.
Town for a couple days, taking the older daughter to Pullman to gather the rest of her belongings and get her all the way moved back home, so. And evaluation, we should have done my evaluation a few months ago. We were a little late, holidays, COVID. I'm hoping to email that out to you tomorrow morning, sometime before noon. Instead of a couple ayes, a dot teased across, you'll get my written evaluation, my self-evaluation, and then a blank evaluation form as well for you, so. The process and the steps are laid out in the first page, this is essentially step three, if you want to keep track of where we're at. And if you have any questions, that's all that I have.
Any questions? Ms. Mayor, I saw that vehicle yesterday, coming back from Lebanon, or back, maybe they're posted in Lebanon, but I saw it go through town, so it's pretty cool.
I gotta say, our mechanic did a great job. He gave it a good look and threw, worked it over and he just did it really.
Why don't we hire the guy?
He is hired. He is hired.
So I have a question, speaking of the homeless, are we, how is, what's happening in the community about that?
Well, that outreach team is working very hard. Maybe Jeff maybe has a little more direct information, he's been working more closely with them. We've got that question on a couple of occasions. Jeff, do you want to comment a little bit on, on the homeless and what we're doing or what's being done to help them?
Absolutely, the street outreach team, they have been within our community and what they're doing is really trying to educate the, our homeless population. And they're educating them on the COVID pandemic, but they're also providing them with masks. They're providing them with some gloves and some hand sanitizer as well. So they're just trying to provide a level of service that they may not have access to. So I applaud them for what they're doing and one of my goals is, once the, once the COVID situation's over and we're free to move around, is to really help, help them build up some of their volunteer base so we can get some of our community members more ingrained with them. They can train them how, how to provide this level of support to the homeless population and really make some headway with that. But obviously, our current situation has, has put the brakes on that.
Thank you. Well, the Community Health Committee meeting was canceled. And so that's normally where these agencies and organizations would be able to report and talk and share what's going on. SORT is there and that's what, a lot of this work is being done and reported to the city. And we've kind of lost that for a little bit. And so if we could figure out a way to at least do it online so we could get reports, it'd be nice to know. If, if sham is a higher increase of asks, or I see they're out on the street with people, so they're not coming in, but they've got that little pop-up out there. What's that looking like for them and the other agencies that provide services in our community? Does our nursing home have enough masks? You know, that kind of thing. It'd be good to know.
Anything else on reports committees? Okay. And nothing, anything else for the city manager and report, mayor's report? We'll go on to department heads, any questions to department heads? Any department heads who'd like to bring anything up? I do want to add, Mr. Lynn, that I see a very impressive photo in the local newspaper of you pulling fire hose. So if you ever want to change careers, we have an opening in the fire department, so.
Mr. Mayor, that was photoshopped, I think.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that, Ms. Mayor, I don't, I can't imagine him doing any work. Physical work, anyway, you know. I know, I know most firefighters, that, almost police officers or police officers have, have not been able to complete the stuff for the, to take to be a paramedic, so I understand, I really do, so. All right, thank you, Jeff, thank you, Blair. Tell them they're doing a great job. They're doing a great job, thanks very much. And James and, can you hear us? Anything you want to add?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Nash? There you are, James. All right. Hey, thanks, guys, thanks for coming on this evening and stay safe. Thanks, everybody, stay safe, keep up the good work. If there's nothing else, we will head and adjourn to Council meeting at 7:46.